Welcome to the Winter of Town Council meeting, July 16th, 2024. We're in the Harvey hearing room. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Counsel Tassanieri.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Costigan.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco. Counsel Aiello.
Yep.
Counsel Swope. Counsel DeRoz.
Here.
Vice President Belchuk. President Luteri.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna skip over and go right to the swearing in. We are incredibly fortunate to be swearing in John Goodwin. Officer for over thirty years, Winter for the past seven, serving in both Winter and Revere. And it's always nice to feel you beat Revere at something else. And we're fortunate to be here. That's always good. But he's been an incredible asset. And I know how much I'm looking forward to seeing all you can do for the town and for public safety. So again, thank you, Chief, for being here. And let's get on with the swearing in. As we're getting ready to swear, Mr. Goodwin in, I'd like to acknowledge a few people that are here with us tonight. We have Representative Jeffrey Turco, Sheriff Tompkins, DA Kevin Hayden, Chelsea, Fire Chief Keith Houghton, Police Chief, I'm sorry. Executive Officer in Revere, Sean Randall, First Assistant Suffolk County DA's Office, Ed Zabin, Retired Revere Fire Chief Gene Doherty, and our own Chief Wiley from Fire. I did say that, I believe. Did I? I did. I'm a little nervous here. All right, I'll ask our town clerk to swear in Chief Goodwin.
Hi, John Goodwin. Do solemnly swear that I will bear faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I will support the Constitution. Thereof and the Constitution of the United States. That I will obey the lawful orders of all my superior officers. And that I will faithfully, impartially, discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as Chief of Police for the town of Winter. According to the best of my ability and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth in the United States. So help me God. I'd like to say one thing. I've known John a long time, and never in my life did I think I had the honor of swearing in.
Like to say anything, Chief?
Yeah, I got a few words to say. Tony?
It's all you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for all being here. As I look around the room and I see my fellow officers, a lot of stories come to mind from the last thirty years. Let's keep it to ourselves. Town Manager Marino, Council President Luteri, members of the council, our state delegation, past and present, thank you for your vote of confidence and support. Thank you to the community for your well wishes and kind words. I pledge to all you I work diligently with our team to deploy our enforcement resources to keep drugs, guns, and violence out of our community and away from our children. It's with confidence that I would compare our team's data-driven, intelligence-led enforcement philosophy and its results with any other department in the country. I pledge to you I work diligently with our team to keep your children away from drugs, guns, and violence by continuing our community engagement and prevention programs in partnership with the school department, CASA, the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office, the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, C4RJ, and our Shanning Grant stakeholders by building trust and confidence with our young people through non-enforcement-related activities. Again, it's with confidence I would compare our community engagement and prevention programs and results with any department in the nation. Finally, I pledge to all of you I work diligently with our team in the time of public health and the clarity to provide intervention services for suffering with addiction, issues with mental health, victims of domestic violence, or people struggling with basic human needs such as food and shelter. Lastly, with confidence, I would compare our community assistance and intervention programs and results with any community on any dimension of the matter. I really mean that. With that said, a big thank you to Chief Delahockey, who is our State for the Family Committee. It is his innovation and leadership that developed and implemented the above framework that will continue to serve the community to the next generation. I am forever grateful for his friendship. And I'm sure he will continue to be a voice. To the men and women of the Winter Police Department, I pledge to you I will advocate to improve your working conditions and to provide you with the state-of-the-art training with one goal in mind, to keep you safe. In closing, thank you to my family that supported me not only in my police career, but throughout my life. To my wife, my biggest critic, my biggest fan. Couldn't have done it without her. Please join me and my family at the Winter Baths for some refreshments. I am so humbled and honored.
My girls, there we go.
Look at the camera.
Come on, come on, come on.
Don't want to start off.
Gonna have a five-minute recess.
Yeah, you're always a hero. Sometimes you have to be.
We do have, as you saw in the prior slides, we have the, and we talked about during the Finance Committee meetings, we have the $220,000 that we keep in there for capital projects. You know, we obviously would look to use retained earnings moving forward if we had to use anything unexpected above and beyond that 220,000. And then we're also looking at bonding opportunities this year. We do have some capital projects that we want to bring forward to the council to consider. We currently have 858,000 in our water stabilization fund. And, you know, we would look to use some of those funds to pay for the bonding expenses as we move forward. And then we're going to continue to look, Director Cal has been looking at low or no interest opportunities offered by the MWRA and the state to fund some of these water improvement projects. So there's an opportunity, we may have another one or two opportunities there for that. And with that, I will certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Town Manager. It's, you know, it's never a great thing to have to do, but I think getting into the habit, I guess for lack of a better word, to do a small yearly increase is better than whacking people at a 10% increase, which is what's happened sometimes in the past. So this is a more sustainable increase of 3.9%. And again, how they calculate their, how we get billed on our assessment is based on a three-year rolling average?
Yes, three-year average of the water usage.
And sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't work. Now, this, the three years, the last, the first year of that three years would probably be the last year of COVID when you had a lot of people home and you had more use and such. And you might see the, you know, the appropriation going down slightly next year. But I think this is a very prudent way to do it, and I applaud your work on this. And I'll open it up to any other questions on the council.
Can you, I'm sorry.
Just under the gun. We had you there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Can you just go ahead and reiterate what the indirect costs were? They were up by the most in terms of percentage, not the most in terms of dollars, but what does that 23.7 reflect?
That's the indirect cost. That's the cost of the town charges back to the enterprise fund for services that we provide, you know, whether it's my time, accounting's time, you know, some of the insurances, things like that. So all of that's kind of blended in there. It's in the budget book. If you look at the indirect costs and the percentages of salaries and what gets charged for the CFO, the Assistant CFO, things like that. So that total, this is the largest one by far, you know, because of given the size of the indirects and the amount of work that we do. Treasurer Collector is a big one for the billing and all that kind of stuff. So those indirect costs went up this year, so.
So just basically staffing?
Correct.
Again, not staffing within the water and sort of not staffing at town.
On the town side and charging it back.
It's basically the support that they're getting along with insurances and stuff.
I didn't know if it was inflation or anything like that, and I was just trying to figure out the huge increase.
And to that point, where that's one of the things the council and the Finance Commission had asked for, they wanted that breakdown of, you know, what those percentages are in an actual, you know, real total of what those indirect costs are. And we do that for all the enterprise funds, and that's in the budget book.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. Appreciate it. Now let's open up a public hearing to transfer $80,000 from capital stabilization for stormwater engineering Phase Two of Pico, Girdlestone, and Tileston. Council Belcher, you want?
Hello. So finance, before this meeting, I don't know if Council Doras wants to give the update since he's in the room. It might be a little better than this floating voice.
Sure, happy to do it. We did meet earlier this evening, and we did discuss this one item, which is to, it's a motion by Town Manager Marino to transfer $80,000 from the capital stabilization fund to stormwater engineering fund for the Tileston, Girdlestone, and Pico areas. So I see some smiles in the room already across the room for people for whom this means a lot immediately. So this is the second round that has to do with funding the engineering phase of the project. There will be other phases, obviously, in the future. And this is an iterative process. So as funds are needed, the requests are made. So this is one on the table. And when we met as a committee, subcommittee earlier tonight, we provided a positive recommendation for this.
Thank you. Before I open it up for questions, I will ask Town Manager, obviously, we are still looking and have applied for grants for this project, but we do not want to slow down or let up on the pedal. We think this is incredibly important, and we want to keep the process going. Can you give us an update as to the grant process?
Yeah, we're still waiting to hear from the federal grant, but we didn't hear on the other one that we got last year until October, November. So, you know, I anticipate the fall sometime. And then I'm also putting in an application along with the other vulnerability assessment that we're applying for through the CZM grant program. We're also putting one in for the stormwater engineering as well, which are, I was going to give an update, but those are both due this Friday. So we're working on both those applications. In fact, there's a few letters of support that'll go out from my office and probably one from the council that will forward over as well for both of those.
And as this process continues, I know the residents have been, I can't speak for all of them, but I think they've been pleased with the efforts from the DPW. And I want to thank Director Cal and his staff for all the work that he's done since we've been able to garner a couple of pumps. Things have been going much better. It's a lot of work, but I know it's appreciated by the community and especially by the residents. So I want to thank you personally for that and your staff. And we will open it up for questions from the public or from the council. Wow, this is too easy. Council Ayala.
First of all, I'd like to thank all those that you just thanked, DPW, Tony, the staff, to show the urgency that was needed. It was just terrific. That was really wonderful. And while all the councils have been part of this team, I just want to commend Council Munson for his doggedness of, really, from the very beginning, just sort of understanding and articulating for the rest of us what has been going on repeatedly and something that has to be dealt with in the short term and the long term. So thank you for that.
Council Munson.
I want to continue with the thank you tone, and I thank everybody. I get a lot of feedback from the residents, and I've been, some of them are here. And I just wanted to relay that, you know, that thanks and that gratitude to you and then also to the guys that are on the boots on the ground pouring rain. But I did have a question regarding CZM. Is that one of the grants that 3A would, if we were to deny it, would be withdrawn from us? And how was the timing work on some of that?
I don't think CZM is listed. It's not one of the grants. MVP is, but not CZM.
MVP, that's what I was trying to say, yeah.
And even that, on the MVP, like if we were to get the award this year for the MVP
Which is around.
and say that somebody, you know, went through, didn't pass 3A, we'd continue to get those grants. Those aren't one of the ones listed. It would impact future applications. My understanding of it is, you know, those grant monies would stay in board, hopefully, unless they change those rules. But otherwise, we would be able to move forward and, you know, it might impact future grant applications, but we'd be okay. Because we've got 1.6 in this year as an ask, $400,000 for Pico and then the 1.2 to do the design for the Morton and Banks.
And that would give us enough money if we were to win those grants? We would, that would be enough to complete the design process?
No, 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 that's something separate. That's for the flood mitigation over there. And we're also doing a vulnerability assessment for the Pico area with regard to the marsh and all that stuff. But this is, we have separate grant applications in for this, but I didn't want to confuse the MVP and, you know, the MVP is the one that's impacted by 3A, not CZM right now.
I see. All right. So with that being said, timing of a vote would be important, or you're saying it would be irrelevant?
It would be irrelevant for these, the applications.
For the application that are already in.
Already in, going forward, so the timing wouldn't really matter for us in this year. Well, I appreciate it. Again, I know this is a long process, but obviously lives are being affected by all this stormwater and the flooding. So I think this ongoing effort, and thank you, Council Ayala, and everyone here to keeping the pressure on what is basically one of the most pressing fires or floods in this situation that this town is trying to handle. So thanks again.
The other, yes.
So I just want to, again.
Just name and precinct.
So it's my thank you to everybody.
Just again.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just think I have 34 Pico out. Sorry. I see the guys down there at the beach digging out the CM, digging in the areas, trying to figure out exactly what's going on. They're always down there. I call, you know, small street flooding and stuff like that. I just call. They come down, they check it. You know, so I just, again, Cal is unbelievable, his whole crew. All the guys come down, they're all very friendly. I mean, I'm very friendly with them. And you guys doing this for us is very well appreciated. Like, and it's only a small amount of us. That's why we never thought we could get this far, you know, because it's not a lot of houses that are affected. But it's enough that makes my life terrible with Brendan's and there's a few others. And so I just want to say thank you for putting in all this extra work and doing what needs to be done down there. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Any other comment? Yes, Council Doras.
Just briefly, this is probably the best time to bring this up in the meeting. While we tackle these, what I would refer to as short-term, kind of must-have steps, I want everybody to know that I attended and several other councillors attended the meeting that Save the Harbor, Save the Bay had here in Winthrop. It was specifically a climate workshop focused on Winthrop. And we had, it was at the E.B. Newton. We probably had 50-plus attendees. So while we're tending to the short-term must-have stuff now like this, please know that the entire newly-formed Climate Citizens Advisory Commission on Climate was in attendance at that meeting as well. So they are about to have their first public meeting in the month of August. So be looking for that on the town calendar. And please join in that effort. So just wanted to call that out. Tackling the short-term must-have stuff now. We are underway with tackling the longer-term stuff. So thanks to all of the members of that commission, and we're going to do good work.
Anything else on the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Before I open the second public hearing with the swearing-in and stuff, I would like everybody to please rise and just do the pledge. Go ahead, by Council Ayala.
Let's lead the flag for the United States of America and build a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry for the pettiness there. We will now open the second public hearing on short-term rentals. And we'll ask Councilor Vice President Belcher.
Hello. So this is showing up for a public hearing, I think, because there is a concern that there's a zoning implication. I spoke with Attorney Sipoletta, and the process for the zoning for this, it's that we'll pass the ordinance in whatever form that is amended or what have you. And then the second step that we'll need to take is to look at our zoning table and determine where we want to allow this. In brief conversation with Attorney Sipoletta, it seems like it will make sense to allow in every rare type of places we have zoned as light manufacturing, which I truly am not sure exactly where those are on the map. But that's the second half of this. I have received some feedback from councillors on the draft ordinance. I haven't heard from too many members of the public. I have a few comments, but I think that it may be beneficial to send this back to rules and ordinance after discussion tonight. I would like anybody who did bring up concerns to voice them out, just so it's all transparent. And then we'll go back to committee, hopefully tighten up the bringing background for a final time before the zoning conversation.
Right. It is a public hearing. It is open for comment. Anyone from the public? Yes.
Hi, Ken Goodwin, Precinct Two. I think this new proposed ordinance is a definite step in the right direction over a decade overdue. I think there's going to be many people that are either going to be proponents of it and there are going to be opponents of it. With that said, it's a definite step in the right direction. And we've been doing this now for over a decade. We were the first, as you know, to get the first license in the state, an Airbnb license. We do not feel that we are detriment to any neighborhood. We are actually, we consider ourselves ambassadors of the town and make a contribution to the town rather than a detriment. But some people will not view that, and we understand that. But again, I would like to thank everybody that had their stake in it as far as changing it. It was entirely overdue. And we reviewed it, and it was a step in the right direction.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone from the council? Council Munson.
Does anyone know, including Town Manager, about the light manufacturing zoning? Do we have that? I mean, I know Walden has a little bit of that, but.
We, I don't have the map in front of me. We define it, but I'd have to look at the map. It's a small area, but I'd have to see exactly.
So basically, it would be pervasive for the whole town?
Correct.
With the?
For the most part, yeah.
For the most part. Thank you.
Council Tastner.
There's a question about, I thought there were some edits that I, I'm not sure if made it into this draft for the penalties and violations. I don't know if they're in this, the changes were incorporated or if they didn't make it to.
Vice President Belcher.
There are definitely some evidence to this, but that is one of the, from Council Ayala, he sent in some ideas for increased penalties for bad behaviors, which I do agree with. We want to make sure this is kept in a way that protects the people who are doing it right.
Right, yeah.
So if that's what you're referring to, Council Tastner, they're not in this draft, but those I intend to bring back to rules and ordinance for inclusion.
Thank you, Vice President Belcher. Council Ayala.
And just to be clear, I'm hearing Council Belcher say, you've had a number of hearings on this, a number of meetings on this. This is sort of a last call for anybody that wants to weigh in on the draft circulating with the intent to pass it, bring it back to the council, and finally put this stuff in place, which, again, I believe is well overdue. But great work, but we should all be aware, if we have any more comments, we have to send them to Council Belcher.
Council Munson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to kind of follow up on that. We've made a lot of progress, and we've put a lot of work into it. Attorney Jim Sipoletta did an incredible amount of work in, you know, like kind of synthesizing a lot of different towns' best practices and had numerous meetings even before, you know, when Steve was still here, Steve Roggerio. So I think that we can't stop the momentum, and I feel, being on the Rules and Ordinance Committee, and I know Hannah is of the same mindset, that we will take this feedback, this last round, and we will go ahead and make the edits and get it back here as soon as possible so that we're not even more overdue.
Thank you. Any other public comment? With that, we will close the public hearing, and we will go to public comment. Yes, Diana.
Diana Vienz, Precinct Two. I have an announcement to make. On Monday, July 15th, at 1:36 PM, the people of Winthrop submitted a citizens' initiative petition with respect to 3A zoning in Winthrop, Massachusetts. And this council is now blocked from voting on 3A or any associated 3A plan. The effect of this petition is to remove the 3A decision from this town council and place it in the hands of the people of Winthrop. What happens next? After a review of this petition, this council has two options. A, adopt the language of this petition into our laws as Section 17.04.060 of the ordinances of the town of Winthrop, or it goes on the ballot. It goes on the ballot in one of two ways. Either this town council makes a motion of its own volition to put this on the ballot under Section 8.8 of our charter demonstrating that you are a friend to the people and of democracy, or we, the citizens of Winthrop, put it on the ballot under the rules as specified in Section 8.5 of our charter. In case you are wondering, there is zero getting out of this. Not now that the petition is submitted, the law states that the town council is forced to act upon it. Any attempt by this council to vote on 3A will violate the law of conflicting our alternative measures because doing so would conflict with our petition. This violation of law will land you in court. The law of conflicting our alternative measures is well established, and the courts overwhelmingly favor voters' rights. In fact, the lawsuit is drafted already right here and is waiting to be filed in the Suffolk Superior Court in Boston at 3 Pemberton Square. On top of that, any attempt to vote on 3A by this council is an automatic rejection of our citizens' initiative petition, which kicks off the supplementary petition process. This process puts the 3A question on the ballot automatically. Only this time, you'll have exposed yourself to a lawsuit having violated the civil rights of the citizens of Winthrop to exercise their right to vote. Note that this action was necessary to prevent this council from acting in a way that was contrary to our meticulously drafted exemption case, a filing backed by three top legal experts and being finalized as we speak. And two, from foolishly rushing a vote on an illegally enforced zoning mandate, my job. Now being challenged in the SJC by the town of Milton and in a federal class action at the US District Court by 24 cities and towns, Winthrop being one of them. If you have any questions, Hannah, this includes you, about the process of citizen initiative measures under Chapter 8.5 or about voters' rights in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and your exposure to liability should you choose to attempt to abrogate voters' rights. The recommendation is that you consult a lawyer.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
Is this the first comment?
This is the first. All right. Public comment is over for now. Correspondents, Denise.
We did receive from Caitlin Burrows, who she's in strong support for the town to move as quickly as possible to bring our zoning into compliance with the MBTA community laws. She has a firm opposition to any measure to waste money and resources on any frivolous lawsuits to oppose complying with this law. We have, the Winthrop Historical Commission has written a letter to oppose the MBTA 3 zoning to the town council and the planning board. In reference to the five districts that could be considered and noted, one is the Metcalf Square Center Historic District, which is placed on the State and National Register of Historic Places. They state that 3A zoning would eliminate any possibility of these districts to be considered or nominated to the National Register of Historical Places if considered. Donna Segretti-Riley wrote a letter in reference to MBTA 3A zoning, and her pleasure about town being credited the 220 units and feels that the 600-plus center and waterfront units could easily satisfy our 3A obligations.
Thank you. Committee reports. Intergovernmental Strategies and Finance. Council Tastner.
Mr. President, the Intergovernmental Strategies and Finance Joint Committee met last week. Council Swope provided an update on the follow-up questions to the MWRA regarding traffic and traffic counts going in and out of the island and on their five-year capital plan. The response was they don't count personal vehicles in and off, on and off the island, and that they hadn't provided what the increase in traffic would be based on their five-year capital plan. The council is going to follow up with more detailed asks from the MWRA. Council Ayala reported on Massport. We discussed the pilot payments versus mitigation. Councilors Ayala, Swope, and Doras and myself all wanted to make sure we kept the health concerns of the citizens of the town on the table when we go into discussions with Massport. Three mentioned studies that we should have on file that we'd like to review. But we can connect with the Town Manager and his staff on that. And then there were discussions on existing payments versus inflation rate. And though we found, thank you to Town Manager and the Assistant Finance.
Sarah Johnson.
Yeah, what's Sarah's title?
Finance Director.
Thank you to the Town Manager and the Finance Director for putting that together. And what we noticed from that is that the payments kept up for the most part with inflation, with about, a variance of about $50,000 from, you know, year over year, that we received less than what inflation would have been. Between the two contracts, though, which had 20-year lives, that was just under, just under $1 million that we kind of lost out on here. So that's just information that's informing our, I guess, what we want to put together for the goals and strategies for the outcome of these negotiations going into the end of this fiscal, the end of this calendar year. We would also like to discuss with Attorney Sipoletta what it would constitute, a executive meeting, an executive session to discuss those negotiation strategies, goals, so that they're not discussed in a forum that can be viewed by representatives of the MWRA or Massport. We were scheduled to hold our next meeting next Tuesday, but it seems that there are several conflicts. We wouldn't have a quorum to meet. So we'll have to come up with another meeting date. Oh, lastly, we do want to connect with the Town Manager on an RFI for professional negotiators. But we, I don't know if we're there yet. Probably would help to get some info from the president on that.
Okay. We will look into that, look into the possibility of that. Not a bad idea. Did you have a comment?
That was, it was actually, he almost took the words out of my mouth. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were going to eventually employ or find someone that was experienced in negotiations with these two firms, two organizations, so that way they knew what was likely or not likely and how to go about getting things done. So, I mean, I applaud you guys' effort, but I just want to make sure that there's someone that's kind of been through this with them before.
So the goal is really just to lay the groundwork, and then hopefully we'll have the Town Manager and the president will figure out who could be on advisory committee and then whether or not we would, we would be able to actually engage someone. I think the first step would be a request for information, to see if there's anyone out there who has, who will negotiate something like this.
Okay. I would second that if that were out there.
Thank you. Council Ayala.
Just to clarify this million dollars that we, in theory, in terms of spending power of what we receive from MWRA and Massport together. The agreements we have either have a fixed rate of this is what we're going to give you year by year, or they have a, here's your first year, and we'll go with the rate of inflation with a cap, I think it was 2.5% on one of the agreements. If you actually look at the rate of inflation from the very beginning of these agreements to today, if those payments had been inflated according to the rate of inflation every year, over the period of time, we would have received in today's dollars over $1 million more than we had over the last decade, basically. So that's one of the things we're going to think about is if we get into a longer-term arrangement, again, whether or not we want to make sure that we can have some relief from those kinds of caps so they can stay current in terms of spending power.
All right. Thank you, councillors. Not on the agenda, but the Appointments Committee has met. And Vice President Belcher, do you have a report?
Sure. We met prior to the meeting this evening. It was myself and Councilor Doras. We are behind on the evaluation process for council appointed employees, so that's the Town Manager, Town Clerk, and Council Clerk, which are several Denise. We are going to use the same process we used last year essentially, where the full council has given it an evaluation form to evaluate the Town Manager and Town Clerk on a few different metrics related to job performance as well as the goals that they set for themselves last year. The council will be getting a link to a Google form for that in their inbox in the morning. We're asking that you complete those as soon as possible by Monday at 5:00 AM. The latest, if we can compile them, send to a meeting with Tony and Denise to get votes for the upcoming year, and then present at the first meeting in August, a full council evaluation.
Thank you. Very good. Moving on to the school department report. School department did meet a week ago yesterday. And the major topic on the agenda is, it's a relatively light agenda in the summer, but the major topic was a two-and-a-half override, which has been discussed over the past several months. There will be, prior to the next school committee meeting, there will be a
There will be, prior to the next school committee meeting, there will be a, a school department Subcommittee on Finance and Budget meeting, which will discuss in more detail the numbers that they're discussing after superintendent has worked tirelessly with the CFO and the school business officer, and have come up trying to do forecasting, which, you know, we're usually doing for next year's budget, now trying to forecast for the next three to five years, so we can get a very accurate number. And I'm sure the Subcommittee's gonna look at that and see what needs to be tweaked. If anything, it will then go to the school department, school committee, at, I would believe, the next scheduled meeting. School committee will vote on a number. That number will be submitted to the town council. The town council will vote to approve to put it on the ballot, or vote not to put it on the ballot. It will not be any kind of amendment from the, from the town council. It will either be put on or not put on. So we encourage you to keep informed on this. If you have questions, concerns, thoughts, please feel free to contact anyone on the school department, or the school, on, on the school committee, or the school superintendent. Thank you. Yes. Councilor Swob.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask a question. What is our role in this?
Our role is to approve the request from the school, or not approve, the request from the school committee to put an override on the ballot.
Is our role at all to support the amendment, or to support what they're doing?
I think by voting to put it on the ballot, you're supporting the motion.
But it's not to promote, or?
No, our job is not to promote. Yeah, Councilor Iello.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I understand the schedule, so this is July, the next meeting of the school committee will be in August?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Do we have a date on that?
Monday.
The next meeting is Monday.
Oh, this is coming Monday?
Yes.
You think the vote will come?
I, I believe the vote could come this coming week.
Okay.
Or it could be the following meeting. I'm not, I, I mean, I can't.
And then we'll deal with it the first?
And then we should deal with it sometime in August, yes. Either the first or second meeting in August.
And the dead, and that will meet well ahead of the deadline for?
Deadline to get, to place a ballot question on is, I believe, 30 days prior?
Thirty days.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five days, prior to the election. So you're looking at the beginning of October, but obviously you wanna get it all well before that.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Ms. Council President. Just a quick update on the fire station. We did take a look at the basketball court. We went out there with Director Cal, the chief and council president. We didn't measure it out, using the wheel, figuring, using the existing designs we had. Looks like it will fit with some site work, obviously. We knew we'd have to go into the hill a little bit. Parking will be limited, so the talk of maybe, you know, taking out a little bit of that corner, and maybe connecting to the other lot, and creating some parking along that Walden Street there, so more to follow, but we're, I'm getting some pricing from Kessel and Boos to take a look and analyze that site a little bit, just to see, we know what the building, for the most part, will cost, but what's the site work gonna be? They can, you know, create that, um, budget sheet for us, so we can kinda get a hand on what the costs will be. So we'll probably be back to the council just to potentially find a funding source for that, and once I get the pricing. So I'll bring that forward to the next meeting. Did I wanna, I know there's some questions raised about the tree removal. I did wanna clarify the process a little bit. I did misspeak last time when I said we waited for a porch arborist. I mean, when the tree company came out, they did call the warden, because they felt like the trees were a threat. The tree warden, at that point, made the call to take the trees down, which was within his right to do, but the reason we asked for the arborist report is because we, you know, expected concern, right, raised because of the past practice, any time a tree's come down, I've gotten 75 phone calls. So I wanted to make sure we had the arborist report done, so that's why we asked for it. I didn't wanna think that the tree company was supplying the arborists. They did that at our request, because we wanted to have a follow-up on the trees were taken down. That being said, we have instituted a policy that we will no longer be taking trees down the same day. If the tree company identifies a tree that needs, they think might need to be taken down, we will, myself and Director Cal, will take a look at it, along with the tree warden, and then at that point decide if we need to bring an arborist in or not, and then, you know, make the call, and then we can schedule the tree if it needs to come down at a later date. So we have sort of put a pause in the process to sort of address any concerns that people might have, that it's, you know, being done quickly or not, you know, with the proper processes in place in order to protect the shade trees. So I just wanted to give an update on that. But I also wanna be clear, and I've heard some comments and things like that, like the charter's really clear on this, this is day-to-day operation stuff. The council cannot instruct me to release anybody, they can instruct me to fire anybody. I wanna be clear about that. Like, I can, that's, that's the town manager's call, and it's in the charter that way, and that's just how it works. So I will, you know, wanted to be clear on that, so, you know, certainly, I'll support my personnel and my staff, and, you know, and take the heat when I have to, but I wanted to be clear, and that's why we put that policy in place. With that being said, with regard to personnel, sad, good for her, sad for us. Kathy Dixon did put in her intent to retire in September from the COA, so we're not, you know, happy about that, but we will, you know, we've been grooming her replacement. Now, we have an assistant director over there that's really strong, and so we'll look to promote from within again, and then we'll probably look to fill in assistant COA director, but Matt Rhodes has been doing a great job, and is certainly ready to take the reins, so that's the process that we're gonna follow moving forward with that. And there will be a celebration for Kathy at some point, probably in August, that we'll get, get information out to the council on that, we'll have the citations and some stuff similar we did for Terry. I had a first meeting with MAPC today, hazard mitigation plan update. We did get a grant for that. It's a small grant, $20,000. The last time we updated our hazard mitigation plan was 2015, so we're working with Martin Pillsbury from their office. I did inform him of our intent to file for a vulnerability assessment, which is sort of a much more detailed plan than what the, you know, 30,000-foot view of the hazard mitigation plan. But the benefit to having the hazard mitigation plan done is this will eventually be approved by FEMA, and then it'll allow us to, you know, go for the federal funds as we need for, you know, stormwater, flooding, things like that. So that's gonna, whether it's a brick grant or whatever, and a lot of this, you know, federal money that's been opened up for roadwork and infrastructure has been funneled into those programs. Chelsea just got, I think, I could be off a little on the number, but a substantial, a $30 million brick grant through that program, so those are, you know, large things, and certainly cumbersome applications, but we wanna make sure we're poised and ready to do that when the money's become available. And lastly, I am away on vacation from July 26th to August 2nd. I think it'll be a two-part coverage. Chief Wiley's gonna do the bulk of it, starting on Monday through Friday, but I may have to get somebody else for the weekend, because he's got plans, so I'll send out a memo and let everybody know who's covering, but I will be away on a cruise, so.
You're welcome.
It's a bagel trip, so I'll be away.
Good for you.
All good.
Very good.
And certainly open to questions.
Councilor Swob.
Away?
Yeah. I know.
I'm just kidding. I'm hoping, thank you for your report on trees.
Yep.
We do have a tree arborist, right?
I believe the tree committee has an arborist on it, but we don't.
Yeah, we, oh, so we don't?
We don't have one on our staff, but I know there's an arborist that sits on the tree committee, I believe. Yeah, maybe two. Yeah, there might be two.
Two, okay. So those would be?
Oh, that's, yeah, exactly. We can, that's why, as I said, we put a policy in place to sort of slow the process down.
No, but I don't think you and Cal, Cal can do a great job of determining a tree, but I would like those tree arborists to be more involved, because, thank goodness, we have them. That's, that's delightful.
More conversation to follow, though. We certainly, we, we heard the concern, so we're taking steps to, you know, to rectify the problem, so.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, we are going on vacation, but I'll get over it.
All right.
All right. Just a, I'll hold that, I'll talk to you later about it.
Yeah.
Councilor Manchin.
Thank you, Ms. President. Great job on having some foresight and trying to get us the vulnerability studies, so that we can open ourselves up to federal money from FEMA.
Yeah, that's a team.
That's not, right.
I'm quarterbacking it, but there were a lot of, a lot of hands involved in that one, so.
This is, this is wonderful. I'm, I'm not sure if the Climate Advisory Committee had anything to do with this, but this is.
Members, for sure, yeah.
This is awesome stuff. I mean, I will ask, though, can you explain what the hazard mitigation plan and the vulnerability study, what is, like, give us a couple of, like, categories of what kind of hazards you're referring to? Are you talking?
Flooding, stormwater, you know, across the board, infrastructure stuff, anything that's gonna cause damage to people's homes, our buildings, town and school buildings across the board. We're certainly a peninsula, we're vulnerable from all sides.
And is that, is that a municipal requirement to do every year?
FEMA, it's a FEMA requirement. We need to have it updated. We haven't done it since 2015, so we need to update it. So we saw the ability to go off of grant money to get it done, so having this in place will put us in a better position to apply for those grants.
And so the company you mentioned, or the Martin Pillsbury, would be someone that?
That's MAPC, Metropolitan Area Plan.
Okay, so then the 30,000 that we would, might be, would be able to pay for that vulnerability study?
It's a $20,000 grant.
Oh, 20,000.
So MAPC will quarterback that. This is sort of the, this is a big picture thing, and identifies, like, the buildings that are a threat, potentially pumping stations, et cetera, identifies, you know, new construction projects coming up, but this, you know, think of the hazard mitigation plan as the 30,000-foot view, and then the vulnerability assessment, we're really, that's a?
Individual streets and?
Four or $500,000, right? So that'll get into the details, and each individual threat, and how we can assess it, so, you know, that's.
That's fantastic. I did have a question about the fire station and on Walden Street, that's, you guys determined that you had enough space.
Basketball court, yeah.
Yeah, so, but my question would be, where exactly, would we be taking away that parking spaces that are currently there?
Yes.
So that the Walden Street basketball courts and the adjacent parking would be taken, but not the one that's on the corner closest to Pleasant?
That's what I talked about, the, Councilor Terry, I landed, you know, take the corner, right, so we could create parking along that little bend connecting to that parking lot, and potentially, you know, we know we got a lot of school pickup stuff that goes on there, and it gets a little hectic in the afternoons. We might even be able to create a, kind of a better pickup spot if we do so, a little bit of forethought, and maybe create another walkway down there, so, you know, sort of looking at all avenues, it might be, you know.
It's a holistic approach to getting this as a potential site for review.
Correct.
But, and if we were to do something like this, I have gotten some pushback on the location in terms of how popular the basketball courts are there, and that, I know there's some wonderful courts around town, Massa and Pond Street, both have great courts, but would there be, as part of the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already discussed, that was one of the things that we mentioned, that, you know, even though it's two basketball courts, we think that there's a, very much an importance to the town for those two basketball courts, and we are looking at a plan to relocate them to a location adjacent to that, so.
Oh.
Yeah, we're looking at that, and I, I feel that that's one of the major things you have to do even before it starts.
Right. I'd agree.
Because it also gets, you know, when we went back to the SBAC for building that school, you need a certain amount of green space, and the green space where, basically, you know, recreational space, which was Ingleside Park, which was used, so we don't wanna diminish that, the importance of that, because that gets a lot of use from the coming school, as well as just recreational use in general.
Yeah.
And we wanna be very cognizant of pickup in the afternoon, because that street gets very busy, and there are 20 spaces there that we're cognizant of, that we would wanna try to look at relocating, and in addition to making sure that there's adequate space for fire, for people that work at the firehouse.
Right.
Their cars as well. The, the plot is a pretty big overwhelming plot, but basically, as constituted, it would fit on that plot. It doesn't give a lot of room right now, so that's why we're looking at.
So it hasn't been ruled out, but it hasn't been ruled in, so?
No, it's, it's, you know, it's to the point where we think it's feasible enough to probably ask for some money to get Kessel and Boos to do rail plans, to show us what we want, if it's feasible.
Good. All right. That's great. Councilor Iello.
Councilor Costigan. Yeah, just a couple of notes with regards to the firehouse. If you take the initial Kessel and Boos aerial shot, topside view, placed it on the basketball courts, the initial proposal for the vote last year included all parking, as outlined in that proposal. That entire basketball court plot of land will hold the parking areas that we're being told are possibly limited. I would ask for a recheck on the square footage there for the parking, looking at some of the locales. If you look at the initial design, we had parking up against the police station in that little alleyway, but, but behind the meat market area, and also looking at that 90-degree angle design, the parking locations and spots were within that boundary line. So I just wanna make that clear, unless I'm, I'm incorrect in my data. Secondly, I would recommend that the council, with the discussions between Massport and MW, somebody entertain the idea of maybe them chipping in, or maybe splitting the difference for the Ingleside Park area. And if anyone's familiar with the Ingleside Park locale, that was donated to the town for recreation, so let's not forget that. We can go back to the Ingles family and that agreement initially. The basketball courts, I'm sorry, I think it's recreation, if I'm correct, so I think we, we can't lose sight of trying to restrict certain areas for certain things with regards to the children. If we're displacing two basketball courts for the betterment of the town, I think it beats displacing businesses and eminent domain, as I mentioned previous meetings, so I think we should really think about this seriously. And again, as the council knows, I, I was forthcoming with some of my information as it relates to some of the other towns and their processes, which is very transparent. So I just wanna make sure that all of us are on the same page here, as it relates to what Winter is capable of, and what we have at our doorstep right now with Massport and the MW. So I just wanna be clear about that, put that out there. And I have the utmost confidence in the town manager as well. I'm not saying this in any derogatory fashion, but I will keep my eye on the ball, so to speak, and will, as a town council, give my opinion when necessary, and I feel right now is necessary. Again, maybe my numbers are wrong, but again, I, I did check them, I did measure them, so I would ask for a point of information, once again, on that, and I'll get back to the floor. Thank you.
There are 20 spots there now that are used by the ATC, by staff, by teachers and staff, and we wanna make sure that those would be available. There's also 15 spots in the original plan up on Winter Street that we wanna make sure is available. Right now, on first indication, those spots would not be available in its totality, making sure that the apron is there for the apparatus to be out and such, but we do think that it's very feasible to have it, to have it done. Councilor Iello.
So first, a couple of things. I, I wanna get on the subject of grants, and this is really to give great praise to Tony, who has really, I think, accelerated our pursuit of grants and our understanding of grants and our efficiency in getting them, from the time I started to where we are today, it's like night and day. And let's remember how critical they are. I mean, they're really for capital one-time expenses. We've got, we did the engineer, the preliminary engineering, but those eventually are gonna be maybe $15 million expenses each for each of the neighborhoods with respect to stormwater, there'll be more of them. We have the fire station in front of us, we have other capital needs in front of us, so the fact that you are sort of opening the door for us to hopefully get more dollars, because we can't possibly put all these burdens on the taxpayer, so just thank you for what you're doing ahead of the curve, right? I think it just gives the citizens of this town great comfort that their town government is working to try to figure out how to solve the problems at the lowest possible cost to them as a taxpayer, so that's, and that's important, so thank you for that. One smaller, a couple of smaller scale questions. On Fisherman's Bend, the last report you gave, the new northeast mosquito control is waiting for the Army Corps, have they heard back yet?
They have not. I do a little phone call, though, so I will make sure I get in touch with them before I go on vacation, as Suzanne's on that.
Okay, okay. And if you could just send a note, so that the neighborhood knows what's going on?
Yeah, absolutely.
We had to sprint it around. And in that area of the, of the, of the basketball courts, I went up there while there was some event at the E.B. Newton School, and what I experienced was, so it wasn't, it wasn't a school day thing, right, it was on the weekend, somebody had parked, you know, behind the E.B. Newton in those schools, and came out the way everybody enters, and I noticed that there aren't any arrows that suggest it's sort of a one-way flow. All the, the parents know, right, the kids know, everybody knows, but on weekend use, it's just not clear to those people who are not connected with the school buildings and the process, so I don't know if we can get a sign there.
Yeah, it makes sense, we can do, make it like a one-way sign, or entrance only or something, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would just help. And it, it starts with somebody already parked there, who thinks they can come back the way they went in, so that's the location it needs. And then the last thing, thank you, and I appreciate Go Forward about providing the kind of care you described with respect to tree removal, and making sure we're doing that. Last time I did request, and still would like to see, look at the last 18 months of public trees haven't been taken down in a spreadsheet to describe, you know, which ones were seen by an arborist, which ones were declared, imminent threats, et cetera, et cetera, which ones went to the tree committee, all that kind of stuff, so do it after vacation, but I think it would still be instructive for us to understand what's going on. Thank you.
Councilor Swob.
The second firehouse, are we leaving that? What are we doing with that firehouse?
That's going to be up to the community to decide. We'll probably set up a building reuse committee. We talked about that when we were going for the original fire station. Set up a building reuse committee. One of them's in the historical district and his historical building, the one on Pauline Street. Little less restrictions on the one over by O'Neal, motion out there, so that one will probably, I would think, be up for grabs for whatever the...
Does your question, do we plan on keeping one open?
Are we keeping a second firehouse?
No, not in this plan.
No, if we build a new, a new firehouse, no, the intention is that they would move out of there.
The firehouse that is going to be on the tennis courts would be our firehouse.
Correct, yeah, basketball court, yeah.
And the other firehouse would not be there at, no, no other firehouses.
They wouldn't be used, right, we have to decide, the community would have to decide, the council would decide what they want to do with those buildings, yeah.
Is any, are there any concerns about other residents that are not near the center? Is there any concern about residents of the point or Deer Island that they would be...
I think the chief spoke to that in depth with, I mean, we're one point six square miles, we meet all the standards and, you know, we can get pretty much anywhere. And that location is pretty centrally located, similar to what Pauline Street is, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I will ask, I've had some calls on, you know, mid-afternoon, three o'clock-ish, people coming off M W R A, whether it be work shifts, whatever, and the speed of traffic going down TAFSAF, right? And would like to see maybe T S A C look into the possibility of doing something at like TAFSAF and Otis Street, some sort of stop sign or speed bump or whatever, look into the possibility, because, you know, we've lowered the speed limit, we've done a lot of things, it's still pretty, pretty speedy down there at that time, late in the afternoon. And would like to look into the possibility of having T S A C take a look at that to see if there's something we could do.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Oh, lastly, just real quick, this slide was installed today, I know that was finally over at...
Yes.
Cresta, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you to D P W and their staff, because they took care of it. Finally came in, a lot of supply chain stuff with that, but it's in, we just got to wait a day for it to form up in the pad to set and then we can start using it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Consul President.
All right, yes, one more.
Just, just, just a side note off of Consul Swob. With regards to if the, if the basketball courts were to go be the chosen spot, the savings that we initially talked about, the forty million dollars cost, the middle school that was initially proposed, I would say there's close to maybe ten million dollars of savings if we move it to the basketball courts.
It won't be that much.
With regards to, it's not that much, okay.
Well, we don't know exactly, but with, from the engineering cost and, and the infrastructure cost and moving to create more spaces.
Well, I was, I was also thinking about the, the Wordsworth Building initially, which also had a price tag close to that, so. But I, I would recommend that any, any savings from that may, and again, the, the residents of the point and of the beach area did have a concern regarding that firehouse on Shirley Street. At the close proximity to their homes, let alone Deer Island, as Consul Swob has mentioned. I'm thinking that any cost savings, and I'm, I'm, I haven't been able to find the information with regards to the rehabilitation of the existing fire stations. So I'm, I'm still trying to search for that and find that. But how much would that cost? Can we take some of the savings from the basketball court area? Maybe rehab that Shirley Street station for the residents of precinct three and six? Is that possible?
Well...
They would have at least some skin in the game with regards to their concerns of the past with regards to the vote. I mean, the last vote, as Mr. Aiello pointed out, failed miserably. So you have to have everybody on board as a community in order to, to pass this, this firehouse bill here, so. I'm just some food for thought as we move forward.
And as we talked about, there'd be a building reuse committee that would be set up and all those questions would get asked.
Excellent.
Yeah, so that would be more...
But there wouldn't be a savings, this isn't money we have, this is money we're asking the citizens for.
Right, saving from the original price tag, that's certainly money that would have to be spent.
It's not savings, that, right, liquid savings.
Last, last point. Is, is there any consideration in, in downsizing that initial proposal with regards to the location?
It's already tight as it is.
Is it okay, so it's already been...
I, I would, I would recommend, I would, you know, the fire chief could certainly bring up the speed, or I can have a meeting with you, but I mean, yeah, there's a lot of information that I can give you that, with regard to the Y is thirty thousand square feet and all of that, so I certainly would have to sit with you.
I'd welcome that. Thank you, thank you, Tom, enjoy.
All right, C D I C R?
They have not meeting in July, they will meet again in August.
And policymaking committees?
They have not met yet, it's not...
Old business count, town council transfer eighty thousand dollars from capital stabilization for stormwater engineering. Vice President Belcher?
Again, I don't know if we want to know, sir, you're off, Barry Hamilton is chair of mine, yeah?
I can read a council report.
Sure.
Motion from Town Manager Moreno submitted on July second. I move that the town council transfer eighty thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund to the stormwater engineering special article account for phase two of the stormwater study for Tileston, Girdlestone and Pico Ave areas and take any other action thereto. The current balance in the capital stabilization fund is one million eight hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars. The amount requested eighty thousand, which would leave a balance of one million seven hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars.
All right, there's a motion coming out of finance with a positive recommendation does not require a second, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask Consul Aiello?
I thought you were looking for a second.
Oh, no, no second either. But I'll put that in my pocket for a second if I do need it. Roll call, please.
Consul Tassanieri?
Yes.
Consul Monson?
Yes.
Consul Costigan?
Yes.
Consul DiMarco? Consul Aiello?
Yes.
Consul Swob?
Yes.
Consul DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher? President Latieri?
Yes, motion is passed. Short-term rentals we're going to keep in committee with the hope of having a vote on this in the first meeting in August.
As Council President, if I could, with regard to the first meeting in August, I know planning board had their meeting tonight. There may be a call to, and to have potentially another joint meeting to have the public hearing.
If we did do that, we'd probably have a special meeting for that, because I think it would require that.
Keep on your radar, yeah, for early August, so, okay.
And August first meeting technically is August sixth, I believe. You'll be back from your cruise, but...
I'll just ship those.
I hope so.
Call Consul Swob if you have any issues.
I will.
There is no new business public comment, second round, Jack, yes?
Jack Dog Precinct one. Been a resident here for seventy-two years. I helped the town many, many occasions, going back to the blizzard of seventy-eight, rescuing hot patients. Forward, many, many times. I know that the seawall is an issue. All you have to do is look at it. It's a big issue. So I took it upon myself to bring a level down there. I've said it here before, and the seawall is tilted back towards the street by about fifteen degrees. So that's why it's a failure. I don't know in the past what happened, but it's certainly a failure right now. Plus, it's, it was, the seawall was built in nineteen thirty-five. The life expectancy of the seawall, wherever it is, is about thirty to fifty years. So we're way past two, as far as the seawall. I took a level down there, because I had an interest. Nobody else seemed to be interested in this project except myself. And I took a wheel and measured twenty-five hundred linear feet. I talked to engineers, I talked to seawall construction companies. So I spent a considerable amount of time, my own time, like I've done many, many times in the past. I'm willing to donate my time, my efforts, heavy lifting, whether it's planning, the whole bit. So we come to a meeting a couple of weeks ago and myself and Mr. Aiello had a discussion. I, I didn't think he should be discussing my comments, that's up to you. I did go back and get a verbatim, you know, minutes of, of the last, that meeting, which is what I'm talking about, verbatim. And I knew it at the time, but it, it didn't register until I got the minutes. All this time that I spent since, you know, been living in the town. Mr. Aiello mentioned the word nonsense twice. Now, there was no other people talking about the issue that myself and Mr. Aiello were talking about. So his nonsense remarks were directly, directed at me, nonsense. My efforts were nonsense. I have the minutes, I'll bring them in. The paper's a little bit too heavy to bring over here today. So I, I don't accept the apology. I, I was going to take this, and it's an act, to give to Mr. DeRoz, because you're in charge of this new committee that's formed. I was going to leave all my information to you, but somebody else decided to interject themselves into the issue. I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate a lot of things you say, a lot of...
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, you have your three minutes, Jack, and please let's not get into personalities, thank you. Yes, Cheryl?
Hi, Cheryl Howard, precinct two. So I hope that when we look at the basketball courts for the fire station, that we also look at the middle school building. It's a little less busy corner, it's kind of away from the kids, and it's our property. I know the building has to come down, so I hope that we get the same information for that site as we're going to get for the basketball court. Because I believe that that's our land and we should look at that as a serious option for the firehouse.
Thank you. They're, they're both our land and we do have that information for the middle school site, which we presented at a meeting not too long ago, but we will get it to you also as well.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Massey?
Hi, I'm Marcy Hamilton, precinct two, I just have a few comments. I'd like to thank everybody for continued support for the stormwater brings, I appreciate it. And, ooh, give it around, sorry. My daughter's calling me right now. Hang on. Okay, now she's gone. Let me, can we rewind the clock for one second? There we go. I want to appreciate, I want to thank you for your continued plan moving forward and I look forward to it coming to fruition, hopefully, you know, in the next five years or three years, whatever it takes to get the job done. I also would like to say thank you McKenna Jazz, they run a beautiful Airbnb and have done that for ten years on Tileston Road, and they beautify the street and they beautify parts of the town. And I am grateful to them for their hard work. And, and I enjoy meeting the people that come from all of the world that walk by the daycare and I say hi and, and they're appreciative and they love our town. That's number two. And number three, I would miss the meeting and say the, I had it on the wrong day. But will it be videoed, is it videoed, and will it be on C A T or some part of the...
We did not videotape, I don't believe it was videotaped.
Oh, okay.
But there is follow-up. We were, I believe, the fifth or sixth town that they met with. So I actually asked Chris Mancini to follow up with us and give us the outcomes that they're learning, not only from us, but from the other towns.
Well, can I just ask one more question? Was the, the two thousand seventeen study from the Woods Hole discussed at that time too? That's all I want to know, because they put in some initiatives to our town in two thousand seventeen, the frailties and the vulnerability pieces that exist all over the town. So that's something I'd like to find out about too. And when we're coming, I know it's running late, but I'd like to appreciate and thank you all for what you do, because the meetings you attend, the, just the interest and your input into our town is much appreciated. And I know the people who are listening and are, are going to have to make some big decisions in our town and, and they're all very important ones. And I hope we can get our precincts together and to talk about these things and move them forward for the future of our children and rental needs. Me too.
Thank you. Consul DeRoz, I'm sure we'll get you like a summation of what went on at that meeting for you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Brendan Cooney, precinct five. I just wanted to extend my thanks for passing that motion to continue to fund the engineering. It's, makes me sleep at night and I, I just, my wife is asking me right now what's going on. So thank you for letting me have good news for her. And also, subject of basketball courts, Pico Ave Park got its basketball lines painted. So if you guys want to come shoot some threes, now we know if we're actually shooting threes, so that is a part of it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Sure, I'm going to give the mic to Consul Monson for a brief minute.
Last town council meeting, I was asking about the three A during the town manager report and my question was regarding the density requirements of three A, and I used the word immigrant destination. And some people in correspondence found, took offense to that, and I just wanted to apologize, because the last thing I want to do is disparage any immigrants. I feel America is a country of immigrants and I don't feel like I want to be perpetuating a problem that I'm actually trying to defend. It's our job as political representatives to protect the people in this town and all walks of life. We are America from all the work, from all the different walks of life, all the different nationalities. As a matter of fact, I look forward to celebrating different ethnicities during this heritage months that we look forward to promoting. So again, I apologize if I offended anybody, I certainly meant no harm to any immigrants. I am one myself and we all are technically. Thank you.
Thank you. And so before I get to public relations, I'll just say, you know, we, we, we talk, we've been talking about it an awful lot this meeting over the past several months and, you know, there's always stuff going on in communities, but we have some major stuff. And it's, it's good stuff in a lot of ways, it's trying to move us forward. You know, we're talking about stormwater projects and that's a big deal. We're talking about middle school site that we've been talking about for the past eight years. We're talking about new fire station that we haven't had in a hundred and, hundred and forty-odd years. We're talking about three A almost at nauseam, but it's incredibly important. We're talking about school override, which, you know, we haven't had an override in fifteen years and it stinks to talk about asking the citizens to do more. But this is all incredibly important stuff, we're talking about seawalls a lot and that's incredibly important too. It's just, you know, it's kind of like eating an elephant, you got to do it one step at a time. And you got to, you know, everyone at this table, we might not always agree, but we always, we do want what's best for Winthrop and we try to take it one bite at a time. And it, it's great to talk about eighteen different projects at once, but it would be nice to let's start getting moving on some of these. So I encourage the public again to get educated, especially on override stuff, because you got to get the facts and you got to understand, we have to be transparent. You just have to understand and vote the way you should. There are people that just can't afford it and they have to vote no. And there are people that should, you know, that want to provide what they can. But, you know, you just got to vote informed, that's all I've ever asked for anybody. I'm not asking or telling people how to vote on anything, but just vote informed. But there is an awful lot going on and a lot, you know, it's good, it's, it's good. I've driven around a lot of other cities and towns and I'm always so pleased when I come back to Winthrop. Our roads get a lot of crap. I thank Steve once again. I, I think overall our infrastructure is in really good shape. Do we have some issues? Yeah, we, like every other city and town, but usually they're being addressed, like now in Revere Street with the tip project. But I drive through this town, I'm amazed all the time and I think how beautiful it looks, how fortunate we are to live here. It stinks with the tunnel the way it is, but we have so many places to live here, so I just want people to be cognizant of that. It's just a crazy world we live in and we're doing our very best to give you a town that you should be proud of. So thank you for that. Public relations, the Winthrop Farmers Market has been great again this year. They, they keep getting better every year. And it's every other Sunday, the next one will be July twenty-eighth, the week from this Sunday will be the next one. They're incredibly well-attended, people are all fantastic, the vendors are great, easy to talk to, so I encourage you to take a look there. And then on August, wow, we're headed here, August twenty-fourth, there's an Accessible Adventures Fun Day at Deer Island. I don't, if Denise, do you have anything on that? I'm sorry, I don't.
Yeah, it's an Accessible Adventures Fun Day at Deer Island.
Thank you.
Oh, what?
I just said that.
It is. It's being provided by the Commission on Disabilities. And what it is, is it's down Deer Island and there's a lot of good things for disabled people that are going to be able to, they're going to learn how to fish, they're going to ride an adaptive bike, they're going to take a pedicab around the island, they're going to take a boat tour, they're going to learn about the history of Deer Island. And it's mainly for disabled or people that can use and be able to use these functioning well.
All right, thank you very much, and we'll have a couple of meetings to talk about that more, so we'll keep bringing it up. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? A motion by Consul Monson, second. I'm going to use Consul Aiello's second from before. And any discussion on it, none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.